Yep, you're right. Okay, welcome. We are here for the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission, first of two meetings for calendar year 2023. I'm Eric Castello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Commission. I'm joined to my immediate left by Council President Nick Mosby, member of the Commission, Comptroller Bill Henry, member of the Commission, Councilman Chris Burnett, member of the Commission, and Inspector General Isabel Cummings. I know that Councilman Isaac Yitzchis Schleifer, 5th District, also a member of the Commission, will be here shortly, and I believe we are waiting on Finance Director Michael Moiseyev. We will get right down to the agenda. First item of business is to adopt the meeting minutes from our last meeting. On our colleagues' desks should be three amendments to the minutes, just the correction of three individuals' names. Is there a motion to amend the minutes?
A motion to amend the minutes.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those...
[inaudible]
All those... All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
I move to adopt the minutes.
Motion by Council President Mosby, second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of adopting the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Minutes are adopted as amended. First item of business, let's go to the External Quality Control Review, essentially the peer audit. Mr. City Auditor, if you could give us a brief two or three-minute presentation on... Yep, please. Or you can use the mic right there if you would like as well, or you can go up to the lectern. Give us a quick two- or three-minute overview, and then we'll take questions from the Commission.
Okay, good morning, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commission Members.
You have to use the mic.
Good e-
Otherwise, they can't hear you on the phone.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commission Members, my name is Josh Pash, I'm the City Auditor. I will go ahead and start with the peer review, which is Slide 3. So, we had a peer review this past year. Each audit organization is required to have a peer review to be in compliance with generally accepted government auditing standards and doing those audits. The peer review evaluates the audit organization's system of quality controls, and if it's performing and reporting conformity with professional standards. The department received a rating of pass with deficiency. The deficiencies were independence concerns regarding the current reporting structure, and that is, as we report to the comptroller who has oversees operating agencies such as real estate, and the independence concerns with those, lack of peer review every three years. The last peer review was in 2000, fiscal year 2012. Deputy City Auditor Tandy and myself were working to do that, peer review as soon as possible. There were delays caused by COVID. As we hadn't had the peer review in a number of years, they required an onsite team, which was hard to schedule with COVID. The next item that I mentioned was documentation of independence. Does not specify threats listed in generally accepted government auditing standards. Those threats are familiarity threat, undue influence, et cetera, and basically, in our form, those just were not specifically listed, and that was a recommendation, which we've addressed. And then, the next one was a formal evaluation of impact of non-audit services on independence. For example, if a agency asks us to review their internal control structure for a new program, and we give an assessment, not tell them what to do, but give an assessment that we should formally document if that would impair our independence or have any threat to our independence if we audited that program or that agency. And the last one is to formalize an annual internal quality control process. Up to that point, ours was ad hoc and informal. And that was the peer review summary.
Thank you, Mr. Pash. Is there a...item number two related to policies and procedures not having been updated since 2011? Can you talk about the plan to address that item or the recommendation from the peer reviewer?
Right. The 2011 was specifically...
That was related to...system of quality control, correct? It's on the second...it's on the...it is on the second page of the letter. Standards 5.02 and 5.03 state.
Right, so that reflects back on formalizing our internal control. So, basically, the finding there was related to...sorry, that our internal...that our internal control was...the quality control was informal. We didn't have a specific plan and specific audits that we were doing internal control reviews in a set time, and so, we went and we have put in policies and procedures and have began that formalized quality control to document not only the plan and the structure, but also the results of those reviews.
Great. And at the next meeting, could you...could you plan to provide a little more detailed update on where you're at in those efforts and progress made to date since this meeting?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
Inspector General? I actually had two questions. One, under the formal evaluation of the impact of non-audit services, can you give me some examples of what non-audit services would be?
Right, so, for example, we were requested to look at a grocery card program. So, there was through a federal funding that they were providing grocery cards to families that were hit by COVID. And so, as they're rolling out that program, they asked us to look at their internal control structure to basically see if we saw any deficiencies in it. And so, we evaluated it. We gave some recommendations. We noted some risks that wouldn't be covered by it, and then, they decided whether they're going to take those recommendations. And then, the question would be if we audited that program later on, or that agency, or that bunch of programs, for us to formally do an assessment whether our, I would say, non-audit service, or, let's say, management consulting engagement would impact. The impact would be is if we did an audit, there would be a fear of us auditing our own work. So, we would have to evaluate, did we influence whether that policies and procedures and controls sufficient where, when we're evaluating it, it would be basically evaluating our own work.
Okay, so it's like an evaluation type?
Right, so we'd have to document how it would not impact our auditor view.
Okay. The other thing of note to me, Iran, was a lot was written about independence. I know the new charter amendment now adds accounts payable to audit, to the comptroller's office, which you fall under. How, in order to following, you know, government standards, how are you going to be able to do that? Because it used to fall in the finance, and accounts payable, of course, is incredibly important to the city. So, are you...how...I'm just wondering, how are you going to be able to do that?
So, we had long discussions with the Association of Local Government Auditors, the peer view head, and discussing the specific topic. So, number one, if we do any audit that approaches or are close to accounts payable, first of all, we can't audit accounts payable blanket. And if we do any audit that is, let's say, approaches it, so let's say, a procurement audit, we would have to make an independent evaluation, make an assessment, and then document how we'd be able to maintain independence, basically carving out the accounts payable piece. If there wasn't a way, we'd either have to give a disclaimer in the audit or not perform the audit. And so, to answer your question, it takes formal analysis, formal documentation, to be compliant with those standards, and that would have to do anything that was, you know, approaching accounts payable.
So, in other words, we can't audit accounts payable?
I cannot audit accounts payable.
We'll have to hire someone from outside?
Yes.
Okay. I just never knew what we were going to do.
Yeah. No, I was...I was going to answer and say, we have already started conversations about getting an outside auditor to audit the comptroller's office, because audits can't audit us. And so, we were looking at finding an outside auditor who can audit the other divisions of the comptroller's office, who have not been able to be audited technically since 1964. But we're hoping that we can make that work in the coming year's budget.
Just because accounts payable is a really important issue, and it's an issue that even before this, I mean, the reason that happened was because of the issues. So, the fact that we now can't even audit it brings, it's just a concern that I think is very important.
Right, so example, we actually conducted a accounts payable audit previously, and because of this change, we'll not be able to do a follow-up audit on that ourselves.
Right, okay.
Colleagues, any other questions? All right, Mr. Pash, let's jump into discussion of audits from calendar year 2022.
So, on this slide, we have listed the agencies that were part of the Group B audits and the audits issued in the calendar year 2022. Instead of going through the list, I will...these will all be mentioned in the summary of findings, so it's not too redundant. We can go ahead and start with those. So, the first one is...the next slide, please, is the Department of Law. So, our audit objective was to evaluate the Department of Law's monitoring of compliance with the MBE and WBE goals. So, what we found was that they were not complying completely with the Baltimore City Code. One of the findings and recommendations was related to tracking and monitoring the status of contracts and achievement of those goals. For example, what we found was that the review of compliance with those goals was occurring when they presented a, either amendment or a new contract. The Board of Estimates required them to give us a status update on those goals. The second point was enforcing contracting agencies, which is in their authority, to maintain the documentation and also to submit documents to the MPo on their compliance with those goals. The next audit I have is Department of Planning, the permit process. We actually did two Department of Planning audits. This is the first one. And so, we were looking at Department of Planning and their permit review process for efficiency and effectiveness. We noted that their system accessing historical permit data as an overall basically was not capturing accurate information, and because data points weren't being captured, the report showed that they were taking longer than they were actually doing to turn around permits. So, the recommendations related to that were basically correcting the logic in their system and being able to provide accurate historical data for the reporting. This was doubly challenging for them, because they were actually reporting these metrics to the budget book, and it was, I guess, making them look worse than they were. The next one that we found was that the two systems that they used, the E-Plan system, the E-Permit system, they had restrictions in the system, flaws in the system, what did not allow them to add new employees to the system, which would basically limit their effectiveness and the use of the system. And then, we also recommended that they go ahead and document those policies and procedures for how to add people, and also how the system is designed so that they wouldn't run into those issues. Basically, the person who programmed the system was no longer with the city, and they couldn't make modifications to the system. The next one is BSIT. We are looking to evaluate whether BSIT has adequate policy procedures to guide IT procurement processes to increase efficiency and effectiveness. We are looking at software and applications, and looking at risks such as buying similar software that could do the same thing, having different agencies buy the same software package instead of getting economies of scale. So, one of our findings was that the agencies can bypass the internal controls the city has to notify BSIT that a software is being procured. For example, the financial system would flag some IT procurements and send it to BSIT and others not, depending on the procurement method that was being used. The recommendation there was to look at the new system workday to see that it would fix those, fix those holes. And then, also to work with the Director of Finance. The Director of Finance, the credit card, would review credit card transactions, looking for, among other things, IT procurement, and that process was not effective to capture IT procurement. So, working with Department of Finance to fix the holes there. The next finding for BSIT was that they don't have a centralized inventory of all city business critical applications. The recommendation was to compile that list, and then that has multiple values. So, knowing what needs to be updated, knowing security risks related to them, and then also getting efficiencies of scale there. And then, we also recommended that they create citywide policies to outline the roles of responsibilities of apps regarding those maintenance, enforcing such practices of when upgrades should be made, planning remediation, remem- business continuity and rationalization. The next finding had that they didn't have an audit trail when a application was submitted for the review. It would first go into the infrastructure functional areas, and then they would decide whether it had to go to security and apps. And that was not formally documented of how those decisions were made, and then, what was made. So, for example, if an application was submitted that was already reviewed by IT, it wouldn't have to go through the other two sections, but there was no formalized process of what followed those. Number four, for BSIT, we noted that the AM manual, which was guiding policy procedures, were outdated and ineffective and did not, did not reflect current practices or the current risk environment. And so, we listed a number of policies and AM to update there. The next one is Wreckin' Parks, and we are looking at the equitable distribution of capital projects and capital funds. We had found a number of findings and made a number of recommendations. I will just go ahead and highlight number four, the recommendation to consider equity impact when funding is reallocated from one project to another. So, once the equity analysis is done at the beginning, if the plan and budget is changed from the actual to basically do that analysis. And then, number five, establish a baseline and equity plan to perform an assessment yearly. That's basically to identify where we're starting from, from an equity perspective, and then where we've gone. And then, number six, we recommended recording actual expenditures and actual locations of previously completed projects. There is basically seeing, you know, what we had budgeted and planned compared to what was actually done, and then also using what was done in the past to help us to determine where we should be spending that money in the future. The second finding for Wreckin' Parks was to improve their routine park inspections. So, we found that the park inspections were determined based on the park managers, and it was not formally documented. The QA QC process was not uniform, and we also noted that the QAC process was paper-based instead of digital. And what that resulted in is, if you wanted to look at the QA QC of a different specific park, you had to pull that specific park, and there wasn't an overall view of how the parks are doing in general from the QA QC perspective. And then, the third finding is capital project data. We noted that that's in an Excel spreadsheet, which a lot of people access to, which makes it susceptible to unintentional or intentional data loss. And then, the recommendation there was to create a policy that would secure that data. The next one is Department of Human Resources, part-time employer benefits. The objective was to determine if DHR, the vendor who monitors part-time employment, to identify if everyone is appropriately given the option to have benefits and compliance with the Affordable Care Act, and we did not have any findings or recommendations for that audit. The next one is the Health Department. There, we were looking at if the Health Department had effective monitoring controls over sub-receipients that comply with federal Maryland State regulations. Basically, when the city gets a grant and then parses out that grant funds to an entity that will be providing services and comply with the grant, the city is required to monitor to make sure that they are compliant with the grant. We noted that their practices lack necessary oversight to comply with the federal monitoring requirements, and that they did not have a robust program that made sure the sub-receipients were following the terms and conditions of the award. In the report, we had two tables, which gave more specific details on this, and the recommendation was to draft policies and then to put those policies into action to make sure that the sub-receipients were complying with federal and state record, ROM, rules and regulations. Next is Department of Planning. We looked at equity in their capital budget. We are looking for is, for the Planning Commission and Department of Planning's capital budgeting process, to see how they prioritize capital projects, and specifically with a focus on how the funds are distributed equitably. We had a number of findings here. Number one, the criteria used to evaluate capital improvement projects could use improvement, and we noted that the Evaluation Criteria and Scoring Guide, which weighted equity outcomes, could be and should be updated, and that was a recommendation and finding. The second one, the process to measure report the distribution of capital projects was incomplete. We noted that they needed a process to require agencies to submit an equity analysis for all capital projects that exclude communities, statistical area, through the ordinance estimates, and indicate actual expenditure funding. So, for example, there is approximately 40% of the capital budget, which is not specifically identified to projects, and that are not evaluated to the equity lens. That can include consent decrees and emergency projects, and those are not evaluated for the equity analysis. So, the recommendation was to capture and report the results of those, how those impacted equity, and then also including transfers submitted to agencies, so that would be budget versus actual. And then, to work with Department of Finance to see if they can incorporate a way to evaluate the actual money spent and how that impacts equity. The next finding we had was the opportunity to strengthen residential engagement in the capital budgeting process. We noted that theirs was ad hoc and decentralized. So, we recommended a citywide policy of procedures that covers engaging citizens across the city, beginning of the capital budget process, and then to document and evaluate those recommendations so that we can understand which of those, what was the value of those community engagement, and how that impacted the capital planning process. The next finding was looking at the macro level. We noted that a citywide equity plan to focus the limited resources on underserved communities did not exist, and then the recommendation was that they develop a citywide plan to target underserved communities. So, basically, right now, everything is mostly at the agency level, and we recommendation was to have a citywide perspective to see if we have citywide, how the equity rules and plans and ordinances are being achieved on a citywide level. Okay, and next one was Human Resources. This is the second Human Resource Audit, and we looked at whether FMLA and ADA requests are processed consistently across city agencies, and whether those are following local and federal regulations. Basically, we were notified, and we found that the FMLA and ADA request process and approval process is decentralized. We looked at the Police Department, Human Resources, Public Works, and Transportation, and got an understanding of how they do it, and we had a number of findings. The first finding was that documentation for compliance with FMLA and ADA, specifically with the Police Department and DPW and DOT, that the documentation specifically in documenting approval and then return to work was not always included in the file. And then, we also noted that for DPW, the FMLA files, they're not restricted. There is a level restriction in the office, but they are not restricted on a need-to-know purpose, and since these are, have HIPAA information, that was a recommendation for there, that they secure those file cabinets only to people who are working with ADA and FMLA. We just gave a summary of the follow-up results on prior findings. So, for Department of Law, we had five prior findings. One was implemented, three were partially implemented, and one was not implemented. For DOP, we had two. One was partially implemented and one was not implemented. For BSIT, we had two. Both were implemented. For Wreckin' Parks, we had six prior findings. One was implemented, one was partially, and four was not implemented. For Human Resources, there were no prior findings, and for Health Department, there were two prior findings, and two are partially implemented. And that is the Group B.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? And we've been joined by Councilman Isaac Yitzchis Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Commission. Okay, let's...yes?
The summary of follow-up audits, is that the prior ones, or is that the summary of these findings?
No, these were the audits that were done previously. So, these audits were calendar year 2022, which were covering '20 and '21, and those prior findings that we followed up on were from the previous audit, which would be 2020 and 2021.
Okay, so that was, that was going to be my question. Do you go back, like, a year from now to check if you're...because some of these findings are very important. So, do you, is that how you do it? You go back and you let us know?
Josh, yes, so the charter amendment is clear that the auditor is required to conduct follow-up on recommendations made in the previous audit two years prior.
I think going forward, it would be very helpful to this committee if, like, for instance, with Wreckin' Parks, there's four that have not still been implemented, a little more detail on what those are, and what's the one from the Department of DOP, DOL. So, because, you know, those ones have not been fixed. And so, for all the, because you had a lot of findings. I mean, some of them, I know, break the law, like with HIPAA and that type of thing, so they're important. And so, when you present that to us next time, can you let us know which ones haven't been, in detail, so?
I can add more detail the next meeting, and then also after this meeting, I can send you that information.
Okay, that'd be great. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? All right, let's jump to the scope of Group A audits for calendar year 2023.
So, for the Group A audit plan, which is for this calendar year, we are currently conducting risk assessments for these audits. This includes obtaining significant risks from agencies, the BAOC, the comptroller, and prior audits. So, in order to provide the most value added, we go to the agency heads and to these stakeholders to see what audit assurance would be most valuable to them. So, we're in the process of gathering information. I did put together in the following slides to summarize general areas that we have identified up to now, but we're still adding to that list. And then, once we have put all those together and made our proposed audit plan, we will send that to the BAOC, and then, once everything is finalized, we'll be posting that audit plan on the Department of Audits website. So, for the Group A, we have the general areas under consideration for the audit objectives, for the Fire Department. We are considering the Fire Marshal inspections for housing, community development. We are, have in our risk assessment rental property in the city and how they're monitoring, and then also code enforcement. For BSIT, we have reviewing that BSIT's access to confidential information. We know that confidential information is secured, but that BSIT often has a higher level of access, and seeing what controls they have over that. For Baltimore Development Corporation, one of the areas that we are considering is the enterprise zone tax credits. For Department of Finance, the couple areas are in our risk assessment, money collected in fiduciary, TIF bonds and procurement. And then, for Department of General Services, looking at maintaining, repairing city facilities. For Department of Public Works, we are considering and have in our risk assessment water billing, recycling, and then the city use of GPS. And then, for Mayor's Office of Children Family Success and Homeless Services, we haven't met with that agency and have not identified potential audit objectives for them.
Mr. Pash, two notes. One, on Department of General Services, city facilities. I'd ask that you consider taking a close look at the facilities, specifically, city employee amenities at DOT facilities and DPW yards. We found out some pretty disturbing things over the summer during this previous budget cycle regarding DOT conditions at DOT's tow yard, as well as some of the bathroom facilities for DPW yards. So, certainly concerning to hear that our city employees are working in some of those conditions. And on number seven, Department of Public Works, use of GPS. And on number seven, Department of Public Works, use of GPS, specifically as it relates to not only trash and recycling curbside collection, but also our mechanical street sweeping vehicles.
I'm sorry, what was the last one?
DPW, the...
The specific item of the study?
Oh, mechanical street sweeping, use of GPS on those vehicles as well.
We will add those to our evaluation and determination of the audit plan.
Thank you. All right. And you're going to follow up with the full performance audit plan in terms of the scope of the performance measures via email, right?
Right. So the plan is that once we gather the necessary information from the agencies, we will send an email out to all the commission members to get their feedback, and then once it's been finalized, we'll be posting that on our website. You will get it earlier than that, but for public disclosure, it'll be on our website.
Great. Estimated timeframe on that?
So we have meetings scheduled over the next six weeks. We're looking to accelerate that. So I would say six weeks would be our estimate.
Okay. Great. Colleagues, any other questions?
I have one.
Yep. Inspector General, recognized.
I just have a point for all of our committee. By our own rules, we're supposed to meet every, twice a year, and we failed to do so last. So I think we, as a committee, just need to remember that going forward, that we need to meet every, every six months on this.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions, comments?
Oh, one other thing. I had asked at the last meeting that we get this material a little bit ahead. I would really appreciate it.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, Tandy, want to thank you guys for the excellent work. And I think the fact that there's no media coverage of this is a testament to the hard work that you all have put in over the last couple of years to reform this thing and turn it around and do these audits the correct way. So really appreciate that. If there's no further questions or comments, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. See you soon. Thank you.